Good morning and welcome citizens of Douglas County. The December 1st, 2025 work session of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will come to order. County Clerk, could you please take role?
Yes ma'am. District 1 Commissioner Henry Mitchell.
Present.
District 2 Commissioner Whitney Kenner Jones.
Present.
District 3 Commissioner Martin Raxton.
Present.
District 4 Commissioner Vice Chair Mark Alcaraz.
Present.
Chairman Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones.
Present. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment this morning?
No ma'am.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, we have a presentation this morning. Our presentation this morning is Vision Zero. And Siliman Rana, which is our Managing Director, will be providing this presentation this morning. You have the floor, Managing Director.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, County Administration. Towards start of this year, Douglas County was awarded about half a million dollars from Federal Highway to conduct a comprehensive safety action plan study, referred to as SS4A Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. The goal of this study was to establish a vision zero for Douglas County, which means setting a goal of eliminating and significantly reducing fatal accidents and also addressing high injury crashes. In an effort to do so, under DCDOT's leadership, led by our project manager Abraham, our consultant Pon &amp; Company performed the study, and we now have a final draft for your review and consideration. The plan was developed using robust public engagement, various steering committee meetings, and a presentation before our Transportation Committee last month. With this Vision Zero, we would also target additional federal funding to address the safety needs of Douglas County down the road, and we have prepared a presentation for your review this morning. For that, I invite Mr. Mitchell from Pon &amp; Company to present the plan.
Good morning, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Council. So Mitchell Law, Senior Project Manager of Pon &amp; Company, going to walk through the presentation for the SS4A Safety Action Plan. Happy to be here today. This slide provides a little bit of background of what SS4A is all about. It was created by the current infrastructure, transportation infrastructure law at the federal level to prevent and address fatalities and serious injuries on corridors throughout the country, throughout cities, throughout counties. The program focuses on two different portions. One, the Planning and Demonstration Grant, and then second, the Implementation Grants. It is a step process where counties like itself will have to develop criteria and a safety action plan to get access to federal funding in the implementation grant portion. So this plan and the motion by the commission will satisfy that requirement. Then we'll open up the door for opportunity to apply for federal funding in the spring. Vision Zero is a common initiative across the country. As you see here, many examples of similar communities really put forth that every life lost on roads are preventable. And having that key criteria and focus on addressing those serious injury and fatalities through infrastructure, through engineering, through programming, will help shift the paradigm to achieve that vision of zero. This is just a little bit of our process that we took on from the project administration, from the collecting of information, data, existing additions, the public engagement process, our stakeholder process, and then finally developing recommendations through the Safety Action Plan. So just start off a little bit with some of the data. This is a map of Douglas County and the crash density throughout, of all crashes throughout the county over the last four years. You see the more intense colors reflect more intensity of presence of fatalities and injuries. And there was blue dots on the map represent fatality crashes. So you can see a huge emphasis along the I-20 corridor and some of the main state routes throughout the county. So this is the kind of purpose of this plan to really address some of those outcomes. Digging into the numbers a little bit more, you see here, this chart really shows just the numbers associated with some of those crashes. Where you see over 2024 had roughly 85 serious injuries and 19 fatalities. And you see that the trend is kind of living out around that 100, 110 mark around for fatalities, serious injuries. So this plan is hopefully will address those outcomes. And this map, through our analysis and through the work of the community engagement process, one of the key milestones in this plan is develop a high injury network. It's with the understanding that the vast majority of crashes happen on a small percentage of roadways throughout the county. So this map represents that priority of roadways where those high, where those injuries are happening. So addressing these corridors with programming and engineers will help address the vast majority of crashes and fatalities we see out on the roadways. A little bit about our engagement process and some of the things that we heard. Some of the main pillars were pedestrian safety, so addressing sidewalk connectivity, crossings, and just pedestrian infrastructure overall. Addressing driver behavior related to speeding, related to just bad behavior on the roadways, unsafe intersections, so making sure that intersections are highly visible, well lit, and there's education around how to utilize those effectively, and then lighting and visibility. So getting more street lighting on the roadways, so light those intersections, light those corridors where pedestrians and bicyclists in the community are utilizing, and especially those around schools, so we can ensure that our young people have access to, you know, a healthy and active lifestyle. Digging deeper into our recommendations, here we're going to show two kind of sections. One, other policy recommendations, then we get into the project recommendations. There are 32 policy recommendations across five different categories. Categories are multi-motor facilities, engineering, street design, road user behavior, community, and collaboration and safety programs. And then here I just have inserted just a quick taste of what those policies include, from complete streets policies, freight planning, speed management, access management. And then getting down into even more community collaborations, such as partnering with schools and the school district around safety, safety on the roadway, partnering with our senior population to ensure that they're involved in the process when we're designing and engineering roadways. Partnering with GDOT to ensure that our student at the county projects are up to standard, up to when we make upgrades, and then addressing some of the bad behaviors you see on the roadway through transportation safety education and youth safety incentive program. Now getting into the roadway projects. These are, this is just kind of a sampling of the distribution of projects throughout the county. They are, and then when we get into, we did go through a prioritization process. We ranked, associated a project prioritization score with all the projects and a cost estimate. So you can see here that the projects are prioritized. And then there's, and these are projects that are either fully desert county projects or partnered with Department of Transportation. There's another subset of projects that are projects with local municipalities, Douglasville, Villarica, and others. But we really want to focus on what is in the spirit influence for county DOT. And then for, that previous session was intersection project, this is roadway projects. So some of the roadways that you probably expect, addressing how they function, how they feel, how the user experience feels, and really make sure that we address those sections that are in alignment where fatalities and crashes are happening within the county. And then at the transportation as well, just a listing of all the projects, and then that list prioritized with cost estimates. And then I guess we're sitting in where we have these different buckets and cost estimate totals. That in jurisdiction is those projects that are desert county or partnered with the Department of Transportation, and then none jurisdictional or with the local municipalities that are a little bit outside of the sphere. So there's a big number there, but we'll get to some of the next steps of how to address that. Funding, 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 and leveraging the county funding to get access to those federal dollars to really implement this vision over time. So talking about the vision, here is a little bit, here is their Vision Zero statement. I'll read it, "By 2050, desert county aims to reduce the number of people killed or since injured in traffic crashes to zero annually, representing a 100% reduction from current levels." This target reflects the county's long-term commitment to Vision Zero, eliminating all traffic fatalities and serious injuries through safer streets, safer speeds, safer people, and stronger post-crash response. So the commitment from you all to a Vision Zero statement is a requirement for the Safety Action Plan that will go on to FHWA. It had two different criterias. One, to either achieve that business, to have a target to achieve Vision Zero, or have a percentage reduction. And with working with county staff and our stakeholders and public involvement, they really felt strongly that that 100% reduction was in what should be the target. So that's what we bring to you today. And then as I wrap up here, next steps is really continuing to develop. The cost estimate is the phasing the projects, coordinating with GDOT, coordinating with local jurisdictions, pursue funding from the federal level and other sources, and continue just to monitor the data, the information that come in where crashes are happening, so we can address them through either programming or the engineering and build projects. Just overall, just let's find out, want to find a look at our schedule. We're at the end, our next steps will be working with county staff and our stakeholder group to develop some recommendations on which projects to put forward for application for federal funding that we hope to open in the spring. And that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioners? Any questions? Okay. Very good presentation. Thank you so much. Oh, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Commissioner Mitchell has a question.
I'm sorry. I had to get it all together first. Okay. So, okay. So I guess a couple of questions. I don't know what either or, it doesn't really matter. So just so I understand your role in all of this. You're just whom or what, so I can understand your role. Then I want to get into the mere fact of a couple of other questions about the projects and their priorities. So help me understand Mr. Mitchell's role.
So DCDOT advertised a bid to retain a consulting, a consultant to perform this planning study per the Federal Highway Guidelines. So Pon &amp; Company was selected as the planning consultant for this study.
Got it, got it, got it. And how did you come up with potentially these priorities? How do we get there to say, you know, Thornton Road or Highway 5 is the focal point? And I see we've got several potential projects.
Right.
Don't know exactly where they all are. And it would be really nice to kind of break them all out to be and tell what districts they're in. On top of, how do we understand your priorities and how did you get there?
Sure. The foundation of this plan was safety. So what we did was, we looked back at data of, let's say, five to 10 years and studied the crash trends across the county with a major emphasis on fatalities and high injury accidents. And then those led us to those roads and intersections. And this wasn't boundary-driven by districts. It was strictly data-driven on crashes. And with those, our consultant had a scoring sheet that I'll invite him to speak on. That helped us do cost benefit ratios of the projects and safety benefits we could attain from, let's say, improving intersection versus installing a sidewalk. And then through that comprehensive approach, we listed, we had a list of projects that would help us in elimination of fatalities in Douglas County. But Pon &amp; Company had a scoring sheet that they used to further prioritize and score the projects.
Got it.
Can you speak a little bit further to that? The Federal Highway Administration has a list of what they call safety county measures. Things from lighting, roundabouts, widening sidewalks, improving sidewalks, crossings. They have, it's around two dozen different county measures that they have researched and that they are sharing with counties and cities across the country, that these are, have a significant impact on addressing some of those fatalities and serious injuries. So we start that as a base, and then we, like Siliman said, we use a data analysis to understand whether fatalities are happening, what's the volume data, how many cars are coming through there, what time of day, what the conditions are, and really do a kind of a process, a data-driven process, try to determine how those stack up in priority. And in our prioritization process, we do things like, we weigh, we have weighed towards cost, difficulty, complexity to implement. Also, if there's, you know, cross jurisdiction coordination, or can the county do it on its own, funding barriers, things like, does it align with the themes that we heard in the community engagement process? Does it address fatalities, or does it address any serious injuries that we've been able to identify in our data analysis as well?
Got it, got it, got it. And so with that, so it's not driven by district, it's driven by where the accidents are occurring. And that data drives where you guys kind of put your focus on?
That's right. The way we understand roads, the roads don't recognize district.
Correct.
They are cross jurisdictional, cross district. So to fully address some of the needs and some of the conditions that we're seeing out there, we need to look at the roadways holistically to address, to understand what kind of conditions are contributing to the crashes and to really apply the right county measure to address those.
And then how do we kind of start with the funding potential source? Because some of this could be kind of state and/or federal and/or, I mean, so how do we navigate that? Because I just remember when we did the Highway 92 bypass, we all went to Washington to the Federal Highway Commission, and then we kind of got them on board, and then we went to railroad and that's GDOT and others. So how is that, how is that journey is going to go?
Well, our game plan with every project is to, you know, maximize output for the county, but minimize our financial contribution or burden. So for every project, it would be unique. So let's say if there's state involvement, our preference would be to push as hard as we can as a county, but let state pay for the majority of it.
Correct.
So we'll have game plans depending on the priorities and the jurisdictional overlaps. Also, this is a long-term plan. So many new opportunities, for example, competitive grants or formula-based allocations, they may come up over time. And that's when we'll align the funding resources with our prioritized lists and see what fits best with our needs. And that's our game plan for now. A lot of these state projects, our goal would be to have state pay for them. And then some of the local ones, our goal is to either fund it locally, but also keep an eye on federal funds and see if there are any grants that we can get to support these projects.
Right. We're going to need a lot of grants, because I mean, this looks like to be a lot of potential dollars that, and I see the need, I'm definitely assured of that. And potentially, again, we don't know what that match will be. We don't even know kind of where the jurisdiction will cross, what lines it may or may not cross. So we'll have to kind of do that case by case. Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell, yes.
And one thing I'll just add, while the numbers for the fiscal improvements do kind of raise our brow and has a little bit of sticker shock to them, it's important to know that the policy recommendation are just as impactful and sometimes, and oftentimes, more, you get your better bang for your dollars. So things like organizing with schools to address, through safety orders, to address where there's danger, intersections, where the experience is negative, to address some of the barriers that parents are having, allowing their kids to walk in bicycle to school. Things like helmet giveaways, where you can, you know, really significantly improve outcomes for individuals just by wearing a helmet. Things that DOT can do through policy, through complete streets policy, through additional planning and development of their projects to really center safety as they develop and their engineering drawings and priorities with their own dollars. And so there's so much more that are not cost-behaviorive. There's certain important to consider.
And I just know, I just remember when we did the Highway 92 bypass, we used safety as an angle to kind of get these guys to address it more on the federal side and GDOT and Norfolk and so on and so forth. And it worked, because out of all the other tryings, when we tried to do this, it didn't work. Nobody wanted to truly get involved with the dollars and cents, because that's, that what made it or break it, is the dollars and cents. One last question here. So is there a need for us, this board, to kind of have these kind of ongoing conversations once we decide on how we're going with this? With our federal highway commissions and our Congress and so on, that we have relations with to kind of help assist with, when it comes to the potential dollars or match or whatever that may be?
Certainly, Commissioner. Advocacy would be an ongoing need, and as Madam Chair will be serving on the NACO Committee for Transportation Funding, the IJET is set to expire next year. The new spending bill will have to take into consideration the safety needs, the congestion relief needs of local municipalities. And these numbers will help guide that advocacy effort for the county. So, and then a step further would be on our specific applications for grants or project-specific funding requests. Those relationships and conversations would certainly be very beneficial.
So how far ahead will you guys keep us? I mean, this is some good stuff here, that kind of, so we are, when we do have these conversations, my colleagues, that we can kind of make sure that we, while we have their attention, to kind of mention some of these things to be prepared for?
Right. So after this plan is adopted by the board, we have a set of projects that are now eligible for federal funds. For each project, we would have to apply individually, and we'll come back before the board with application approvals. On those instances, let's say we put in application for roadway priority number one, that would be the time after submission that we can start those advocacy efforts for that specific project and communicate with them about the importance. And that way, we'll continue to be in conversation. And as these project funding applications go in, we'll communicate with the board and get your approvals on these specific ones as we go, and then, you know, continue those conversations with federal partners along the way.
Good. Well, keep us in the loop though, but I just know it works.
It does.
The system works if we use it. And just to my colleagues, if and when we get there, we should have these kind of conversations with, for those who know from the Congress on the federal level to GDOT and so on, to kind of hopefully move it along and kind of get some interest. Because if not, it'll go unnoticed. And then we'll be looking at kind of footing the bill on something, on a project that's really needed. So thank you again. I appreciate it. Madam Chair, I yield back.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Raxton, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. And good morning, and thank you for the presentation. Just on the short term, just as part of the Steering Committee, I was just, and I see that looks like the majority of the fatalities are on I-20. So I was just curious, have we brought in like the Highway Safety Patrol from the state of Georgia? Have they been involved with the conversations? And is there some things on the interim level immediately that we can engage highway safety control to even start reducing the fatality rates even on I-20?
Yes, sir. I think the current line of action is to get this plan adopted and I think the current line of action is to get this plan adopted and recognize the severity of crashes on I-20 at county level and then have it recognized by federal highways approval of this plan. After that, you know, it goes in as an approved document for action by the state, by the county and by the federal government. And we'll continue having those conversations. It's a very well-known and accepted fact about the safety concerns on I-20. Those are ongoing conversations and this, adoption of this plan further strengthens that argument about the urgency of improvements on I-20. We've seen some movement. We've seen the interchange project that's under construction right now. There are long-term projects for I-20 that are planned, they're on the docket. But plans like these could expedite delivery of those projects and funding priorities at the state level.
Okay. That'll be good to have. And I'm just thinking as we get ready to start having sessions with our local state delegation to be able to start promoting this and having this as an agenda item for them to even start having conversations as they get ready to start a session in 2026. All right. Thank you. All right, Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Any other questions forward? All right. Thank you. Amazing presentation. Thank you. What commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review the agenda? And if you have, do we, we need a motion to approve the agenda? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. In the discussion board, we have a motion and a second. Please prepare to cast your electronic votes.
Commissioner Raxton, you're stood.
It didn't come up. It didn't come up, but I approve.
Okay.
Didn't come up.
Motion carries five oh.
We have a five oh unanimous vote and the motion carries board. Thank you so much. Board, please let's just be reminded that each of us have three minutes to make remarks and with the two-minute rebuttal. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Be prepared tomorrow to approve or deny the minutes accordingly for our last couple of meetings. We will now begin our agenda item. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you. We will start with our grants. Number four is authorization to accept the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Q-23-8-015 grant award in the amount of $50,000 with a match of $16,667 to be funded by Karen Alexander's grant-funded salary. Establish the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Teresa Gordy.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. Thank you for having me today.
Good morning.
This grant will provide funding for us to be able to go into the jail and screen every potential inmate for an accountability court. It'll provide funding for the screener as well as a laptop. And I learned last week that we had an opportunity to apply for additional funding with this grant, which I did, and I received email notification on Tuesday that we received it. So that will also provide for a case manager to track the data because the state's really looking at Douglas County closely for the data because we're a one-county jurisdiction and we have multiple accountability courts. So they'll really get a good look at how this screening tool works in the jail. But I'll have to bring that additional award in front of you as soon as I receive the official documentation.
All right. Thank you. Board of Commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Gordy?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Number five is authorization to accept an ARPA grant from the Judicial Council of Georgia in the amount of $93,126 with no match. Establish the budget for the purchase and installation of annotated courtroom monitors for Superior Court to assist with improving the efficiency of criminal jury trials and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Justin Ricks.
Good morning, all. This will just be for the three Superior Courts on the fourth floor. We'll be adding annotated monitors to the witness stands. We've had this grant in the past and we've had issues where we've been audited because it wasn't signed by the proper person. So we need the chairman to sign it so that we can move forward with the project.
Okay. Any questions forward?
Yes.
You have the floor.
All right. Thank you. Good morning.
Commissioner Raxton.
All right. So notice that it says three of the Superior Court Courts, and I think we have a four. So I'm just curious, is the fourth one, is that already being taken care of in the build-out or what was the status of that?
So when we applied for the grant, the initial plan was for the equipment in the fourth Superior courtroom to be moved down to the, because it's currently a state courtroom. We planned to move that equipment down to the third floor but changed it. Plans have changed. So that's in the works. Right now, we're just going to do the three and eventually look into working on the fourth courtroom when we get the chance or when we have the funds available.
Okay. Okay. And then in regards to quotation, quotation 19496, I noticed where the part number is the same for all of the six items but the unit prices are different. And I was just curious why there are different unit price versus the part number? The part number, and it's for the one-year client care in the five courtrooms and the jury gathering room.
Okay. So courtroom two is a very large Superior courtroom. So it's always going to cost more for wiring and things that I really can't speak to. However, the other two state courtrooms are always going to be combined. So that's going to be separate and the one-year client care is built separately. So does that answer your question?
So it's based on the size of the room? I'm just.
I guess it's the amount of equipment that they need to make it to where it works. So from what I remember, there was something about extra wiring and things like that.
Extra wiring? Okay. Okay. I was just curious about that because the unit, like I said, was the same as far as the part number but the unit prices were different. And I just wanted to understand why was there a difference?
Yes. So every other courtroom is the same size except courtroom two on the fourth floor. That one will always be different because of the size.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Ricks? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will begin with our business items. Number six is approval of a five-year agreement with Motorola in the amount of $1,059,000 to be funded by the Sheriff's Department 2026 budget for body cameras, in-vehicle cameras and storage and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Deputy Connor.
Morning.
Good morning.
So what we have before you is the Motorola body camera refresh. It also includes the vehicle. There's, I think, there's 40 cameras that are in the vehicles, the vehicle cameras, that are over 10 years old and they are on a L3 company system which has been obsolete. So if one breaks down, we're, we're having to buy them as it stands right now. So the actual contract price for this with Motorola is 1.8. However, they said that if we sign a letter of intent, that we're going to proceed. So this renews in February. So in February, if we don't, if we don't sign this letter of intent, the price is going to be 1.8. If we go ahead and sign the letter of intent, there's no new contract. All they're going to do is continue with the existing contract. They're going to invoice us. So we have two options prior to that. One is to pay all of it upfront and we'll get a discount. It'll be $1,059,000, which is a savings of $772,950 if we go ahead and sign the intent to continue. And that's where we pay it all upfront and we have to have that signed by December 23rd. If we decide that we don't want to pay it all upfront but we want to sign before February and sign the letter of intent, the price is 1.1, which is a difference of $41,000. So the money's been allocated in our 26 budget to cover this. And all we're asking now, we're not having to pay anything right now. We're asking to pay for it out of the 26 budget where the funds have already been allocated.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chief Deputy Connor. Any questions for Chief?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Raxton, you have the floor.
All right. Good morning and thank you. So again, thank you for highlighting that there's a 42% discount if we pay upfront, one time upfront for, if we make the $1,059,000 versus waiting till 2026 where it's 1.8 million. So that's a significant discount and savings there. So based on that, I just wanted to confirm, based on what I see here as far as all the items, there should not be any additional reoccurring charges for the services, for the cameras, for the next five years? And I just wanted to just confirm that is correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's one time done, five years, we're covered.
We replaced his 307 cameras and 40 in-car cameras.
Okay. Okay.
And currently, 207 of the body cameras are an old model. They're no longer issued. So we're replacing, so if you remember, we bought the 97 not long ago. Those are still good. And basically what they said is y'all can keep them. And what I intended to do is to send a procurement to, to have auctioned off so that we can recoup some money from some jurisdiction that, that needs a camera that they could use that may not be able to buy the latest model.
Okay. All right. And have we, and so based on the approval, then we'll receive the invoice and the invoice has a net 30 payment schedule? Is that my understanding as well?
Right. If we choose to go with all upfront for the 1.059, then they would invoice us in, I'm assuming in February when our contract would normally renew. So we would do that. If we decide to do where we pay over the period of time at the 1.1, the first year's $254,146.89, then it's $211,551.48 annually after that. But paying it all at once saves you $41,000 off that price.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chief. So, so that I'm clear. I think I've heard it correctly that this 1.59 savings, I mean, well, $700-plus thousand of savings if we do it all in one. And I guess maybe not a question for you but more of a question for county administrators. So are we able, which I think we are, able to kind of cover that cost to try to, you know, capture the potential savings even though it's not due until February if I'm not mistaken?
Correct.
Yes, I believe we are.
Okay. So, so we're in a good position to possibly, you know, acquire that, that savings? And maintenance cost? Well, let me back up. Five years, that's a one-time fee or is this an annual fee that we're looking at?
So if you pay it upfront, the 1.059, that's it for five years?
For five years.
If you decide not to do the upfront and you want to spread it out?
Upfront, we don't stay at the upfront. We got to go through the other stuff. We're going to stay at the upfront.
Okay.
I think that's where we like that. But the other question to add to that, what about maintenance and any other software updates and, you know, all the other stuff?
It's all included.
Come on up, come on up, come on up and talk to us. Yeah, yeah, come on up.
This is Rod Ross, our IT Director. That will cover everything, all software, maintenance warranties. It also includes a mid-contract refresh. So year three, we would get all new camera systems.
Got it. Okay, okay. You guys worked out a real great deal here, I guess. That's really good. really good. We're just having some technical diff- oh, there we go. Looked like we were back up. So we good to go now?
Uh huh. Wow, technology.
Are we back on DCTV-23 and all that good stuff? Okay, they checking all that stuff, so let's give them a minute, huh? Write down my question before I forget. Got to write down my question because if not, I'll forget what I was going to ask.
Chief, you made the power go off.
Fixing them and all that other good stuff that comes along, maintenance, you know, like once they die, they're dead.
So as far as I know, the process, we followed it before on some stuff in the past.
Okay. I think, I think we're good.
But basically, I believe they use an online auction service and it would be up to the person that's purchasing it to research it and realize what they're buying.
But I'm assuming we're going to have to acknowledge that. I mean, because I know it's buyer beware, but on top of, I don't want my colleagues from other jurisdictions and county operations knowing that they're going to get body cameras potentially that once they're dead, they could be dead. And I think we got procurement that's going to come up and just answer some of that, you know. Yeah.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Mitchell. GovDeals is the platform that we use and they actually have a section in there for law enforcement. So it will not go out to everyone. It will just go to the law enforcement section. And in there, we do have descriptions of the equipment. We do have everything. We will lay out everything in there that, you know, it is and as is.
Right.
And that this does not have any warranties access, you know, et cetera. So most things that are on GovDeals come with that same verbiage. So we will just potentially reach out to only law enforcement individuals and let them know that as well.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, there's 159 counties potentially that can't afford the new stuff, you know, that will probably bid on this because they just can't afford the new stuff.
Right.
And don't want to see these guys out there looking for potential maintenance six months, six years from now saying, hey, we trying to update the camera, but the lens are not, you know, don't have any more lenses that will work with that.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. We'll work with sheriff departments on the purpose.
Got it. And the funding from all of that, once you guys go to auction and do whatever you're doing, those dollars will go into a specific account to help on you guys and or would it go back into the general funds? Or would that be a question for our CFO, I guess?
It's county-owned property. It would go back to y'all, general fund.
Got it. Okay. Okay, all right. Outside of that, thank you. And I think it was a great job of what you guys have done, what you put together. Now, again, hopefully we'll see this potential savings. And again, from the finance side of things, the Finance Committee as the chair of that, you know, hearing it directly from the county administrator saying, guys, we can kind of afford this and actually benefit from that potential savings. So thank you. All right, thank you, guys. I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other questions, Board? All right, Madam Clerk, you have the floor. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Number seven is approval of a new juvenile court contracted attorney agreements reflecting the transfer of contract responsibility from the juvenile public defender to Superior Court Administrator, Justin Ricks, with no impact to the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Justin Ricks.
Thank you and hello again.
Hello.
I'm going to try to make this as clear as possible because it can be quite confusing. Currently, juvenile, the juvenile public defender contracts out different attorneys to represent the state. This is a direct conflict interest, conflict of interest because they are representing or they're going against the state. So basically what I did is just updated the contracts, changed the language to remove the juvenile public defender and replacing it with Superior Court Administrator. What we'll need is new signatures from everybody, so that does include the chairman as well. So that's about it.
Okay. Any questions, Board?
This is-
Commissioner Kenneth Jones, you have the floor.
Just so that everybody is tracking around the same page, this was the issue that we were trying to address last year when we asked for the funding for a court administrator so that the juvenile public defender's office didn't have to manage the contracts of their opposing counsel. So this just resolves that issue.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you're back.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Kenneth Jones, if there are no more questions, I think we're okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Ricks, you have the floor, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, approval of an MOU with Avrtest LLC, DBA, Avr Health to provide drug testing analysis for the state accountability courts and the Superior Court accountability courts to be funded by grants, state fund, and the department's budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Teresa Gordy.
Hello again. Avr Health has provided drug testing analysis for the state and Superior Court Accountability Courts for, I know at least, six years. That's how long I've been here. This is just an updated MOU with updated prices and scope of services. And we're starting to, state and Superior Court are starting to combine as many of these MOUs as we can because they're providing the same services to both courts.
Okay. Any questions, Board? Commissioner Kenneth Jones, you have the floor.
Is there a reason why the juvenile courts substance use testing is being done by a different service and have y'all considered consolidating that as well so that they're, you're all using the same providers?
I do not know. I would have to speak to Jennifer King about, you know, why they use a different.
Can you find, can you find that out?
Sure.
Because I would assume that if we added that court in too, that that would hopefully help streamline and maybe we could get a reduced
Okay.
costs from the use, everybody using the same person.
Okay.
Madam Chair, you're back.
Okay. Any other questions, Board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, thank you and good morning. I was just curious, do you have an estimated cost of what we spent in 2024 and what we're tracking in 2025 for the services?
On average, we, state court has spent about $36,000 a year. This is just for analysis, not for specimen collection. And then felony court probably spends about $60,000 a year. And that varies depending on the census of our programs. Plus, if we do extra testing, like if we are told, you know, we're suspicious that participants may be using a particular type of drug, we may run a panel on everybody just to do a blanket and see. And sometimes those cost more than just your standard test.
Okay.
We checked with Avr Health about them possibly doing our specimen collection. They were just too expensive. We have a much better deal with the current provider.
I see. Okay. All right, well, thank you. And again, I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback in regards to juvenile court as well. So again, if we can get some savings with all three, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Thank you so much again, Ms. Gordy. Madam Clerk.
Number nine, certificate of preliminary plat approval for Malsi Oak Subdivision District Three. This was deferred from November 3, 2025. Austin Cronin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners and County Administration.
Good morning.
Updated my presentation, which I'll bring up very shortly. There we are. All right. And so this is the 190 lot subdivision, single-family detached, spread across two zoning districts, residential medium density with conditions and residential low density on, at the intersection of Pope Road and Anawaki Road or nearby. So the residential medium density with conditions is a result of a 2006 rezoning case. The conditions are applicable to only that section. It's about 82.23 acres and the RLD portion is 30 acres, around 113 acres in total. So the current proposal is meant to be proposed by, served by sewer and all conditions of zoning are still applicable. So none of those have gone away. And these are transportation-related dedications, right-of-way and improvements, which I'll detail in just a second, and a minimum of 2,200 square feet of heated floor space for the residential medium density section. So the intersection improvements from the 2006 rezoning, they'll have to be submitted as a separate project to be approved by Douglas County Department of Transportation before approval of the final plat. These include these improvements here, like a left town, left turn eastbound and right turn deceleration lane into the entrance of Anawaki Road, as well as different improvements along the intersection of Anawaki and Pope Road. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And the developer is here as well to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. I see you yielding and leaning in. You have the floor.
All right, thank you and good morning. And also, you and I, we've had the conversation even last time when this was brought forth and just my concern with the intensity of this development in this community is just not, in my opinion, and what I've obtained from the residents, something that because of the traffic and again-
Madam Chair, let me just ask, do you know the source of the issue? Like, would it need time to figure out the source?
Yeah.
So it won't happen again?
I don't know because it is something that appears to be beyond our control. I'm guessing that it might be due to whatever construction is happening in the building.
Would it, would it be beneficial for whoever, certainly not asking you, but would it be beneficial for us to go into executive?
All right, certainly. We, again, Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Douglas County, we had to pivot this morning as a result of something that's beyond our control, which is the technology has, and also we've had a couple of power surges this morning. So for the sake of time, certainly would just, would love for us to go into executive session, Board of Commissioners, and certainly requesting the patience of our citizens because all this information that we provide is extremely important. So again, accept our apologies this morning, but the power surges are beyond our control. With that being said, Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation, personnel, real estate, and cybersecurity? Do we have a motion, Board?
Madam Chair, make a motion to go into executive session for the matters of cybersecurity, real estate, personnel, and litigation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by raising the right hand of going into executive session. We have a five-o unanimous vote and the motion carries. So citizens of Douglas County, we will take a temporary pause for executive session and we will return momentarily. Again, thank you for your patience this morning on this Monday, December 1. Thank you.